I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Zachary Hilton.
Here.
Helen Scott.
Here.
Michael Gonzalez.
Here.
Travis Rogers.
Here.
Tom Lee.
Here.
Commission secretaries, report on posting of the agenda.
Today's agenda was posted on January 21st, 2017, until we get through the 15th.
Alright, next up, we have item number five ceremonial items. This is awards and presentations. This is the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission Monthly Award acknowledging two city employees tonight, Gary Heap and Neuron Thon. If you guys could come up, or Neuron, if you could go up there. Patrick can meet you up there. They're both from Gilroy Public Works Engineering.
Alright. The Bicycle Pedestrian Commission holds a monthly award recognizing impactful people in our community who contribute significant portions of their time and resources toward achieving bicycle pedestrian-related community involvement, engagement, and encouragement activities. But, we all know that there are many sides to this equation. To ensure that the city of Gilroy delivers on its commitment to enable safer bicycle pedestrian access throughout our city's streets and surrounding infrastructure, we depend on the city's transportation engineering department to fix off the situation, to propose, design, and deliver these improvements at scale. This evening is my great pleasure to preside over our first double award ceremony, which honors two of Gilroy's city staff members. First, our commission's staff liaison and city transportation engineer, Gary Heap, who couldn't be present today. And second, city engineer, Neuron Thon. Gary and Neuron have been openly available to the community and this commission concerning feedback and input for bicycle pedestrian improvements, deployments, and ensuring bicycle enablement infrastructure is present in newly proposed commercial and residential developments in town. On behalf of this commission, I'd like to simply say, "Thank you." Our advisory board would not have the significant impact it has today without your walkstep commitment alongside ours to improve citizen access to safer, greetering streets. I must also note that your capital improvement projects and willingness to mitigate the occasional citizen-reported bike and pedestrian traffic issues has not gone unnoticed. The Gilroy PAC looks forward to continuing our partnership with you to ensure that the city of Gilroy continues to rise to the highest standards in civic life economy with regards to bicycle pedestrian enablements and safety. So here's your award and your signature.
Thank you.
Do you want to sing, Sean?
Perfectly. It's in a front too.
Can I give you my phone too, so that way you don't have to worry about sending it?
Let's get it a little bit tighter.
Too big.
You gonna say cheese?
Cheese.
Macca's.
Thank you very much.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you so much.
You have not got it. Thank you.
Have they moved me away from your shot? Now you don't have to worry.
No, I was like, oh yeah, that scale, one time. Okay, next up is presentations of the commission. This is a moment, a public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Just as a reminder to you that during each agenda item, there is public comment. And if you could please grab a yellow card that's on both sides over by the doors. And please turn that into Sheila if you want to speak on an item. Next up is the VTA BPAC, which I don't think we have a report. Is that right, Connor?
Yeah, the only thing I have to report is that I'm now on a vice chair.
Yay.
Nice.
Good job. Alright, we'll look forward to that report next month.
I have a question. Carolyn, last reports, one of our commissioners expressed a little bit of question or concern because he had heard that there was some talk that your entity, that you're now the bicycle program, could go away. But then I've seen you since and you kind of explained that further to me.
Right. There was a recommendation made by consultants that were brought in to try to swing down the VTA committees that the accessibility committee and bike ped committee be combined. But when that was presented to the VTA board, it was not favorably received. So I'm not anticipating anything. I'll let you know if there's anything.
Fix that update.
Thank you. Alright. Next up is the Safe Raster School Club from Gilroy High School. Come on up. And don't forget to introduce yourselves.
So, thank you, Vice Chair.
Is that on?
Can you hear me?
No.
I can hear you better from up through the mic.
There you go. Thank you. Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. And I wanted to just reintroduce our high school students who have been supporting Public Pedestrian Council Department for the past two years now for the Safe Raster School and Leadership Program. And I'm really excited to be introducing these individuals. A few of them have actually been with us since the beginning of doing Safe Raster School program at Florisong Middle School. So they work with us there at the middle school, do leadership activities. And now the high school students, they are coming back to the middle school, or giving back, I should say, to train and mentor our new students to do activities. So we're going to talk a little bit about their project. And I just want to introduce the members who we have hired. Corina and Heidi. Now welcome. Who are we? We are students established, establishing a Safe Raster School over at Duona High School. Our project focuses on mentoring middle school students to create a lot of opportunities to walk back to the front of school.
How we got started? We got started back in fall of 2016 at Florisong Middle School, as we mentioned. We started off as just a small group of students supporting a Safe Raster project. And we, for the first couple of months, we just kind of collected data online, the ways people, well, students, I should say, got to school and what their hardships were getting to school. Our goals now as a high school group are, is to develop and support a mentorship program between your high school and Florisong Middle School, just to help implement a little bit more of what we've been teaching middle schoolers. Our plan of action at Florisong Middle School, this for short off, I was just, I was wanting to meet with middle schoolers a couple of times a year, just to start training them and teaching them how to conduct education and encouragement activities at their own school. That way it could be like a peer-on-peer thing, instead of an older adult coming in onto a bunch of like middle schoolers and telling them what to do. We train them how to plan educational events such as like what we have bike nights, where we have different activities and students can come out and learn a little bit more. And encouragement days, which are walk-in bike-to-school days, where basically students just walk and bike, just to try to get our walking numbers up. Our plan of action at Gilroy High School, we have received training from Alisa and other mentors. And we meet every week and prepare for our mentorship meetings with our middle schoolers. And we basically just have been developing outreach projects and presentations to give to our middle schoolers and, which has been our, how to implement a Safe Raster School peer mentorship program. So what did we end up doing?
Well, we ended up, we was presenting to the principal and counselors of the middle school. So we had emailed the principal to see if she was interested in working with our club. And then we scheduled a meeting at Gilroy High to present to the principal and to the counselors. And then we showed her the events we had done in the past and all of the activities we had done that promoted safety to school. Recruitment of middle school students. After presenting to the principal, we soon planned a day that we could speak at the bike assembly in middle school. During our meetings at high school, we created flyers and had a logo and times for the meeting at Florisong. After speaking of, or wait. At the meeting, we gave them a brief explanation of what we were there to do and what we had done in our past and how we could approve, improve and keep it going. First, presenting. During our first presentation at the middle school, we presented to the students why we were there and what we were doing. We talked about the events and the activities we would be doing and creating and how to get Safe Rasters involved in the school. We then asked them what activities they had in mind for some of the events. Activities and what involved us. Before the events and what involved us, we let them brainstorm some ideas they learned to have. And then we made flyers and posters and helped them create them for themselves. The activities and what events rewarded those who had walked and biked. They would give little snacks or some hot chocolate, a cold drink, or a lager. Lunch activities would be fun hits where they participated in games involving bikes and certain challenges that would receive trophies. Some more pictures. And then the Bike Fest. The Bike Fest was an event that the students had created that was during lunch and after school hours. It had a lot of fun bike activities. Anyone was allowed to participate, students, parents, and family members. It took a couple of weeks to prepare for, to get all flyers, posters, time slots, everything with the counselors and principals. And the public health worked with the school staff to reach out to the Bay Area bike mobil that would attend the Bike Fest and give students free bike repairs. They also provided helmet and helmet guides and distribution, so they handed out free helmets for kids with bikes. And the students used this to provide helmet safety advice and offer more activities.
Couple more pictures from our Bike Fest. And like I mentioned earlier, us as a group at the high school, we meet every Friday to work on what we love to call our toolkit, because we're trying to basically get the mentorship out and try to implement more programs like this. So we've been working on a website and this is, this is it. It's still definitely a work in progress and it's still a little rough. But it just basically goes over who we are and what we've been doing and how we like implemented this. So we have the high school section at our website, which is just basically what us as high school mentors do. It's just there to help guide other people who would like to start a high school mentorship program, so it tells them their steps throughout that part of the website. And then there is a separate part titled Middle School Mentees. And that basically shows like other people what they should be mentoring on or what their meeting should include, or how to guide their actual students and how to get their mentorship program to actually work as successfully as they would like it to.
So, the reason why we are here today, as you may do know, our public health grant, the Athletic Transportation Grant, it actually ended in March. And so we really worked hard these past couple of years to really think strategically about how we would like to implement a program and sustain this program. But there's still some gaps that are missing or that we're still trying to figure out. And one of these gaps is we really need to have ongoing support to stay, choose our middle school and high school students motivated to continue this project and hopefully to expand it out of middle schools. One of the other things too is really helping to identify adults and teachers specifically at our high school in the immediate form of our school, to really help continue advising this high school. My, I myself have been doing this for the past couple of years and I wish I could continue to do this moving forward, but just because of the funding, it won't be public health ongoing. So I want to make sure that they have some sort of adult support in place, public health asset. And also learning to organize communication between high school students and middle school staff, because again, they are our students, we are very keen on what they can actually do and really need to have adult support as well. And then finally, we would love to share this project with other schools. We don't worry any council would also present this school for, and we'll put down a way too, but we want to make sure that this is presented to both the cities and the schools, that we can have ongoing pressure and support. And thank you so much. Do you have any questions?
Good job. Anybody up here want to? I have a couple of things, but go ahead. Whoever wants to start.
So I don't have any questions, but I want to commend you ladies for a wonderful presentation. I love your motivation and your drive and spirit and a good job so far. Look forward to seeing what you achieve.
I concur. I just have a question is, where does the bike move?
It's in my garage, right? It's in somebody's garage.
It's in Sean's garage. Chat, it's in Sean's garage.
It appears to be on a line. But, I mean, that's another thing, when you have all these materials and you just don't have a central hub of kids' whole, all these supplies that can be shared to other schools as well.
Yeah, that's actually a good question for that reason, but because we actually do need to figure out what things we store, because it is in my garage. And I took it from Florisong and I saw how to bring it back the next week and somehow it's still in my garage. But my kids love it, but I don't want it there for them. It's a great way to stay in shape when you're making smoothies. But my thing, first of all, did somebody make that? Is it somebody bought it, is somebody made it?
It was a personal, so the one that we, someone randomly purchased one from our county.
And just my thought, my thinking is, is you have like basically a science project right there. It's a smoothie with those bikes, just wondering, and I don't know if any of the science staff teachers at Gilroy High shown any interest in that. I hope, you try to for different angles to get some help and support. Could be a math teacher.
Maybe.
But it was great.
Thank you.
I'm aware of one that somebody had built that was around at one point, this was a local bicycle collection. But yeah, these were ordered. I was hoping it was like math class, science class, somebody building it. Try to get a connection to the school via the sciences, you know?
It can happen.
So on the toolkit, it actually relates to the one that we used. So that was one of the reasons why I had it there, was to really show if there are different types of curricula that was developed and the presentations and documents. A lot of these students were applying to different types of presentations and opportunities. So that's all already added on to the toolkit, as well as ones to participate in the future and future.
Ever know?
I, sorry.
No, go.
I just wanted to commend you guys, see you guys did a great job and thank you for your time and effort to put into this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I suspect, Zach and I both have some questions that might give ideas, but maybe, yes, great job. And yeah, please don't let this tie off on your end, because we will support you. One question that came to mind that I mentioned to one of you outside and I was a run out today. I imagine there's some students there that might want to see your presentation on your website and they might do something. I could see that happening in South Valley also, I have kids there. And then you know from Florisong, there's a bike program that's developed through specialized. So things should be growing at the middle schools and hopefully the high schools, especially ones run out in South Valley, get their bike programs going with their PE classes. So hang in there. But what we've learned is that some of these things that we want to have happen end up taking months or years, but you stay with them and then great things start happening. So I just wanted to clarify, you would be interested if we could somehow arrange it and see, visiting other schools or more.
Yeah, I would be interested. I mean, it is our goal to eventually, the program all the way off to middle schools, like the middle schools in the area, and to hopefully like spark other mentorship programs just to get the word out, I guess. So, yeah, I would definitely be interested.
And we do know school board members and things that they could possibly speak to them or maybe come back to our service task force that you came to when we first started. You may remember me from that, but I saw her outside and she remembered me, but then we both forgot different times we met each other. But you came to that and that was outstanding, that student presence at our planning meeting for how we were going to do Safe Raster School in Gilroy. And you might be able to come back to that, to where the important people in the school district could help make decisions about how to help you with this.
So, Corina, this is for you, because I know that you're a past award member here and I remember you from back then. So I challenge you to find somebody when you're out there now that rises to the occasion like the three of you have, that you could nominate for one of those monthly awards. Where we really want to start focusing more on the youth that are making changes, such as the three of you. So if you could find somebody, you can find that on our website, that nomination form. And also too, you know, you, we meet the four Tuesday of every month. If you ever have anything, just, you know, bring your parents, have them drive you down here, walk, bike, however you need to. You always have a platform here to share whatever you're doing. And there is funding that we're currently working on right now for the next 30 years that's just dedicated to education and encouragement and exactly what you're doing. So those little gifts and items and such like that, that public health has been supporting for the last couple of years, we will be able to pick that up for you. We just need to hear it from you of what you need.
And that's where, our emails are all in there as well. So if you don't want to wait, well, yeah, if you don't want to wait until then, send us an email, something happened, hey, can we discuss this or bring up? We have some emails as well.
And we're very interested too, if that bike assembly comes back again. I want to participate again. That was a lot of fun.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah. And I think that's all, yeah, that's all I have. And you know, Alisa, if you could just share the PowerPoint and all that website stuff to us too, so we can share that out as well.
Yeah, I will share the link to the toolkit as well as the PowerPoint and the toolkit is on the comments, so it can be shared out as well.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. We have one member from the public that would like to talk. Dave Muirhead, did I say that right?
Doug Muirhead.
Doug Muirhead, sorry, Doug.
Thank you and good evening commissioners. My name is Doug Muirhead. I live in Morgan Hill. I'm a member of our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Group, which is officially and officially related to our community. I wanted to mention to you that the work that you're doing has actually got some visibility far beyond Gilroy. You may know that each month, one veteran of VTA hosts a webinar, a viewing site for a webinar offered by the Bicycle Pedestrian Professionals Association, open to the public for the meeting. And a fairly recent meeting, Alisa was one of the speakers and described the work she was doing here in Morgan Hill, which got me interested in your high school, middle school mentorship program, which I think is just really awesome. So, got mentioned there, along with some other work. And then more recently, a couple of weeks ago, we had our quarterly meeting, the Traffic and Safety Communities Network. I know at least one of you is familiar with that because you presented, I believe, some time ago. So again, this work was mentioned there. It's a countering organization of veterans. I really don't know how they all came together. They originally started in part of County Road, which seems a little strange in public county. Anyway, I heard about this, I want to come down and hear what the students had to say about it. But I also wanted just to let you know that your work actually is being acknowledged far beyond the boundaries of Gilroy, which I think is excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Alright, next up is consent calendar. And if I could get a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve consent calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next up is, we're actually, if everybody's okay with this, we're going to move up item under new business. If you go down to C, item nine C, that's a review of the capital improvement projects. Everybody's okay with that? We're gonna, we're gonna move up with that. Hold on, actually, one second. Do you want to, hey, so we had already the public comment period on items not on the agenda, but you can come up right now and you have a few minutes to say anything. Or did you want to say on a specific item?
No, it's not, I don't think.
So you can come up right now, otherwise, unless you wanted to sit through.
At least they were really fast and you were like, public comment, then you didn't go on and then.
No, 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 come on up.
This is the second time, maybe, we've had public comments.
Come on up.
So we're not really used to it, so we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Just make sure the, just make sure the mic's on and, which it should be green underneath.
There's a green button.
There's a green button.
Okay, you're good. You just got to speak into it. Hi.
Hi, I'm Dawn Hudson. And so, we're here because we went to the Gilroy High parent club meeting recently and we were talking about the crosswalk at 10th Street and Orchard. And how to create that to get the flashing light. And I know that it's been an ongoing issue for years. Actually, I asked if anybody else want to go and one of my parents commented that she had a friend whose dad was still 20 years ago. So I'm wondering what we do to make that happen? Because I know it's part of, maybe it's part of that plan for the full.
Do you want to answer it? Or you want to go around it?
And so how can we get that extracted? What do we need to do that I know I can get a bunch of people in the community to rally support?
So I, actually, that's one of our, we've been pushing that for a while and.
Yeah, so Groom is the Public Works Director and he's going to have some good news for you.
Now the bar is too high. Well, thanks for your commenting, for being here at the meeting. I believe you referred to the intersection at 10th Street and Orchard? Yeah, which, so we presented to council about six weeks ago about that particular project and how those improvements could be modified or would be modified or carried forward. So we do have intersection improvements that pertain to the high school pedestrian safety, which is already approved, right? And I'll ask Neuron to add to what I'm going to say. But we do have a rapid flashing beacon that's going to be installed at that location, correct? Correct if I'm wrong.
Yeah, it's a little bit, so we got approval from council that it's installed, it's flashing beacon. However, we're working with the school district also, because in addition to put those thing in, there are also some minor concrete improvements that we'll also have to review and put into place. So we're all working with the assistant superintendent of the school district. We have to finalize design once that is complete. We already have funding attached to that.
Okay, that's super exciting. Do you know about the time frame here?
So right now, we're working on the CIP budget process a little bit, ones that dial down a little bit. So before the end of this fiscal year, so before July of this year, we would have, we find a retirement fee going on a bit, of that, what the funding was allocated for this fiscal year.
So we.
Not soon. Not soon enough.
Right, well, not soon enough, but that's exciting. So is there anything that we can do, like to make sure that the pressure stays on? What, tough, tough?
So, so there's a couple of opportunities you have. One is tonight, and we're about to have a review of the CIP that Neuron just talked about. And one of those, I- That neuron just talked about and one of those items is specifically in here. Um, so that's one way you can show your support and then from here it will move to planning commission. And they will review the entire, we're just looking at the bike and pet um preview stuff. They'll look at the entire thing. That's another moment that if you wanted to. Make public comment to support it, to make it rise up, that's another one. And um and then finally it will go to council, but what neuron said that that is different than the other ones, a lot of these projects are unfunded. Um, and they're just ideas. This one has actually already been approved, so they already have the funding for it. Like he said, it just needs to go through the the process of them actually putting out to bid. So I would say you could go report back that it is gonna be. Put in and there's really probably not too much uh, I I don't see the the funds being reallocated to something else. It's already been approved, basically.
Maybe some pressure for the school district to finalize the design?
The design is coming from us. We're just working with them to make sure that, you know, what we're putting in is basically all stakeholders.
Our our plan, okay.
Exactly, because it is a wider intersection. So wherever we try and put these flashing beacon, it has to be brought into the street a little bit. So now we're talking about narrowing the streets on 10th Street, right? So that's why those kind of thing need to be related to a product.
So the school district is waiting for a review of the design?
It's on Monterey.
Yeah, Monterey or Renin Bay.
Where where somebody will hit and then.
It's not on the ground. It's actually the one that we have now. It's a particular boss about this thing. It's only he. Um, it's been installed at Renin Bay for a while next to a roadway. So it's exactly like that. But you can see the minor concrete improvement on it. So those are the kind of thing we need to work with the school district to make sure that what we install in is gonna be, you know, good for a while.
Okay, so then we should show up the planning commission meeting that I'm here just to say, hey, we just want to make sure this is on track.
You're more than welcome to do that.
There's a bunch of people who are excited.
Was there any talk for Johnson at all? Johnson with that area where that was brought up to kind of, even though it doesn't pertain to you and I because. Our kids are.
Right, but that's the changing on the.
The street, like the the changing on the island and yeah, or median, sorry.
So just, so last year, actually for the last couple of years, we've been bringing this intersection up. I'm very aware of, I actually know a person who was hit and laid his head there. So it's always been actually been our goals on our website. Um, so I would recommend just sending out uh. Requesting neuron stuff uh maybe like once a month to say, are we still on track? But you keep sending us, you know, once a month, every couple of weeks, you know, just emails. Hey, we're on target. You're still here. Uh, you can stay up to date on it. Also too, I'm hearing some other. Um, so my name is Chad Revers. Uh, you can get my email off the website. Uh, and just send an email saying, hey, these are other intersections with um that we're concerned about. Uh, what what I'd recommend they do is try to plan a little um, a little walk of this sections. Unfortunately, I work in Cal Office, I'm not always around to see it, but I. Figured out the time to meet somebody there, preferably during school hours, uh just to feel what it's like there and then we can start putting these on goals. Uh, unfortunately, nothing's gonna happen fast. But it will it will never happen if we don't put it down. At least if we put it down, there's a chance we can make some improvements as well. Again, most of us don't go to high school, so we don't know a lot. These issues mustn't wait till after.
Right.
Al- also based on what Chad just informed you on now, the the process works best when the public's engaged. And seeing you two here tonight and giving that direct feedback to us is part of what makes us effective as a commission. So if you know of anyone else in the community that has these types of views and really have issues with certain intersections, streets, crosswalks, you name it. Please do show up here. Having your comments in our meeting minutes just gives us more ammunition to advocate for you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll add a comment. I don't, you don't feel like you can sit down, but uh just like Chad was saying. What's happened in elementary schools and middle schools is uh under the safer school program, schools have been studying and uh. The engineering department has done a great job of participating in that, police department, the school district. Um, but that hasn't necessarily happened uh at the high schools. Um, but if they find out about these things, if you tell us like you did, um, you know. You found out tonight, there's several projects that already have worked, so that's actually will happen relatively fast. Things that nobody's heard of before. Um, it would have to be looked at and this and you know, decision will be made about where that fits in other priorities and and how, you know, what solutions can be made for the area, but. Um, like Chad said, we could come walk an area and and you know, get the studies started on an area that maybe haven't been done.
With our intent is not to have a parent, something escalate to a child. Our children, you know, have many years of high school and then I've lived in the community all my life. So if you don't want something to happen and reaction afterwards, let's put up a crosswalk. It would be so irresponsible, right, as a citizen, so thank you for listening.
You're welcome. Okay, so uh we're gonna move on to um to item nine C. Neuron, you have the you have the floor.
So while while neuron brings up the PowerPoint, I'd like to uh give my overview of the. The city's the city's CIP uh process. This is capital improvement program. Um, this is our first rodeo, so to speak, in creating a more comprehensive planning document for um. All projects within the city of Gilwood, uh ranging from um transportation facilities, utilities. Anything that you can think of that is a capital asset to the city. This capital improvement program will address it in one shape or form and uh as um the two speakers alluded to. We have including this capital improvement plan, projects that have already been approved by council in the last budget cycle. Because we want to make sure that everything is captured in this one big document that we can refer back to. Given that this is an interesting process for us, we developed a policy document that we will take to council. Uh, we'll just share with you snippets of. What is contained in the policy document and how it informs our planning process, budget planning. Um, the policy consists of, um, yeah, you stay in that. The po- if you could go back, uh, the policy consists of, even though you can't, maybe read um the document there. Uh, it talks about what is a CIP process, what is a CIP program, um, how are decisions made? Who are the people that uh select projects, create the budgets, the cost estimates for these projects? And how does council make a decision and what are the scoring and rating criteria for the project? Uh, just to be sure, um, this has not been approved by council. So we have developed a draft document. They know we're working on it, but it will go before council. As part of the budget approval, uh review and approval process. We developed a schedule. Um, this external schedule, as you can see, shows the commissions reviewing this document. Uh, also the other commissions, arts and rec, uh arts and culture. And uh our first encounter with council is gonna be at the end of um. Towards the end of April. So we're hoping that any feedback and comments we get from this body, uh, we will share with council. Uh, for the most part, we've gone through our master plans, um, uh, the individual departments, all commissions that have project ideas. And we incorporated those projects and uh provided as much information as we can uh find and uh. Assembled a project charter and that's contained in your packet from pages to um. Twenty seven through, I guess, um, one hundred twenty-five. I'll let neuron pick a couple of projects and walk you through the the presentation. Um, and we'll be more than happy to respond to any questions that the commission or um. Or residents uh may have on these individual projects that we present to the commission.
Kind of like a kind of hop on what we've been able to. So for the past couple of months, we've been working a little hard on putting together this list of projects. You know, each one of the projects, you know, it's not aligned on itself. It's actually required a lot of like a project description justification. Why do we think, you know, such project is important? And it evolved from all different type departments, like you mentioned, just what they work alone. We have sewer waters, uh storm drain, right? We have transportation. So we have. Um, just the traffic signal infrastructure itself, the electrical work. So it's just all on and on and on, all these other projects. With that, according to all those different departments, we came up with this originally, and I believe it was like a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty. But as we go through and develop this draft policy, it's become more defined into what the threshold for each, what we call the CIP is, become more clear. So that way, some of the some projects did get dropped off, but a hundred thirty-nine of them still stayed on. Um, you know, with the staff, um, you know, the the number of staff that we have, that's quite a big challenge for us. You know, but lucky for us, thirty-four of them is what we kind of did already in the previous, kind of like the ten orders, those who are already been approved and funded. We just showing it now in our CIP uh plan as part of uh our whole entire program so that council understand what our workload is for staff. So with that said, um, just, you know, tonight, what we bring to you is just project, a selected group of projects that is relevant within the range of influence. Um, out of those, there's a total of fifty project total. Twelve of them is kind of like the eight hundred uh number projects or the project that been created previously. But thirty-eight of them are new projects. Those projects are, each one of our departments came up with. Um, they have not been funded. Um, it will be going to councils to uh put their prior. Um, example, I I draw one. So this one is one of the project that has already been funded. Um, this is a citywide program. Now, um, this is the format that we can, uh, the new format we're going with. As you can see, it has a kind of general descriptions of our projects titles and. Who responsible, which departments up top. Um, also a picture is kind of relevant of what we're doing with that projects. Um, also again, a project description and purpose. Why are we doing this project? For instance, the uh CY programs, right? So it is a city responsibility to upgrade all our programs and according to ADA standards. Um, so basically every project which is in the second part of just the case, based on title two of ADA. Any street that was built up in nineteen ninety-two, you need to start bringing up to standard incorporated ADA. ADA standards is, you know, something that is easily to follow. They have a lot of different regulation and different type of standard, everything ranging from federal down to state and down to our local jurisdiction itself, right? So with that said, trying to navigate as such, also quantify and doing an assets management on our existing program and trying to understand. How many of those do we have? How many of those need to upgrade? What kind of upgrades? And also the cost impact release can take a little bit of toll uh on that, so. But with this, what we were given or what we were awarding as part of this project was about two hundred forty thousand dollars a year. So the second page of this that I couldn't fit on here is actually the funding criteria and also how each years are being uh accounted for. So in that um funding, it it ran down to, you know, fiscal year twenty twenty uh twenty-one and then so on and so forth for the next five years. And what is the total expenditure is for that particular project. Um, so that's ones that's been funded already. The next one is actually the ones that we are proposing to council. This is new. This is what staff determines that is, you know, something that we need and want to prioritize. Um, as you're aware, we have a, two thousand and five, we adopted a trail master plan. Um, it's for both pedestrians and uh iceland. As the new uh standards coming up and as we are evaluating these projects, you know, we determine that it is more beneficial for the city to upgrade. The um, their trail master plan and actually split our pedestrian master plan and our bicycle master plan. So that way, each project that has its own uh project list, so to say. And a different focus. So that way, it's, you know, one project doesn't have to wait for the other, right, to happen. So with that said, you know, this project is not yet funded, but we estimated um total cost of roughly fifty thousand dollars just to develop, oh, I'm sorry. A total of about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This is based on doing the entire data assessments of the city. Um, could be accounted for um doing industry account, um doing a study and also putting together a prioritized project list. Similar to what we seen in two thousand and five, but more updated to our conditions, right? So we would, at the end of this, it would be similar to kind of like our sewer master plan, a water master plan. We would have a list of what to focus on, which zone if it is to divide into zone. And um it'll make it easier for us to present to council and for the council also to get the feedback to actually, you know, make recommendations on these kind of projects. So yeah, again, there's about fifty of these projects on here. So as we discussed, rather than going through each and every single one of these projects, which might take a little bit of time. We send out this in packets ahead of time. So if the commission, uh, commissioner had any specific questions to any one of these, um, we'll do a question. So this is, sorry, it was a little bit small. This is a list of fifty projects that we brought into the back tonight. So if there's any particular projects that's um you would like to bring forward and to discuss further, we'd be so.
Thank you.
Just for those two ladies who spoke earlier, I'm sorry I didn't catch your names, but um if you look up here on, yeah, project eight hundred uh two-ten is the Orchard uh and Tenth Street. So it's actually there and funded. So it's, you can take that back if you want to show people, maybe not the video. And you can download this packet off our website. Um, and actually it'll tell you the description of everything about this project and the project manager running it.
neuron, could you tell me about PK twenty-one oh one, the Christmas Hill Park Trail Wayfinding Signage Project?
What page number is it?
Uh, that would be page number twenty-eight.
No, 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 like what actual page number is it in the CIP? So that way we can all look at it.
It's uh PK twenty-one oh one, Christmas Hill Park. In your package, page one-one-three.
Packet page one-one-three.
So I think this item was actually brought into the commissions a while ago. Um, Gary was on here as well because there was an interest in, you know, we have a lot of trail in Christmas Hill Park and not a lot of those, you know, sometimes I guess there was a person coming. And saying that, you know, we have a lot of beautiful trails, but not a lot of peoples are aware of them. So the idea of this project is actually stop putting these wayfinding, as you can see, somewhere around the city. It might not be exactly the same design, but it will summon the guide people when they come into the park and understanding where our trails lead to uh which direction and, you know, we have multiple trails, right? So it's confusing sometimes to see, you know, where does that lead to, how many miles and stuff. So these wayfinding signs really be intended for that, to to help guide people through those trails. And hopefully get people to enjoy our trail as well.
So at this time, it's pretty much not under consideration?
It is not uh, it is not funded. It's not that it's not under consideration.
Everything is under consideration.
Yeah, since it's not specifically listed in any master plan document.
Because it's not. This was, so I'll give you a little history on this too.
Yeah, sure.
So we did a something called party, oh, I'm sorry. It was, let's all go to the park series. It was a public health series. And what we did is um Michelle Wexler uh um hosted it along with the Parks and Rec Commission and our commission. And this was October twenty eighteen, I think, and uh we all met out at Christmas Hill Park. And basically did a guided walk and tour up into the trails. And one thing we realized after that is that not a lot of people knew where they were going. And nobody knew that there was that was inviting. So we brought this back to our commission and we said like, hey, and they brought it back to theirs saying, hey. You know, let's try to find some funding for wayfinding signage. We put that, we put that as a budget request in the last budget, but then it got, it got put into more, that's more capital improvement. Um, rather than like a a budget line item. So that's where that that's where this came from.
Okay, okay, that's helpful.
So since the projects that do not, that um that do not have numbers, the eight hundred numbers, these are gonna be brought forward to council for review. So I'm not saying they're.
Oh, thank you.
We're not saying they're not funded. At this point, they're all gonna be presented and staff will make the decision. To uh, we haven't done that process yet, but we'll we'll recommend which projects could be funded based on availability of funding. Um, maybe some regulatory mandates and. Timeliness of, you know, available funding like grants and things like that. So I just wanted to clarify that some of these projects are gonna be recommended from staff to council and council will make the decision. To approve those recommendations or or approve other projects that are included in the list.
Sure.
So so before we go any further, so would it help you guys if we were to, because some of the eight hundred numbers we've already seen. Also, um, would it, would it help for for us to go through and individual questions we have? And then do you want us to come like, and do you want us to have like a consensus on which ones out of the unfunded ones we feel. Should go through farther as a group? I'm sure we can come up with like five of, like, let's say, okay, we recommend. Uh, generally, we recommend all of them, but these five, if none of them got to be funded, these five, we would like to see. Move up higher in your in your thinking process. Uh, how how do you, how do you want us to be able to say that? Does that make sense what I'm trying to say? I mean, we obviously don't want to go, oh, the bike and pet, they love all fifty. It's like, that's that's not helpful to anybody. But what might, what might be helpful is ten out of the unfunded or five. What what do you?
Yeah, uh, very good question. So we would like to hear the commission's thoughts and and, because you come from a different perspective.
Yeah.
We'd like to hear your your thoughts and ideas about which projects are, you know, critical priority based on what you hear from, you know, um stakeholders.
Okay.
Residents. Uh, and we will take that incorporated into our. Uh and we will take that and incorporate it into our presentation to council.
Okay.
Uh obviously, you have to look at the whole program, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then share, you know, based on, you know, this is the comment we got from the planning commission for general compliance. These are the comments and, and input we got from, you know, Parks and Rec or Arts and Culture and from bike and pet.
Okay.
Uh so certainly, if you feel like you have, you have certain ideas you want to share with us either now or maybe at the next meeting after you've gone through and digest this information.
I'm ready, I'm ready tonight. I just wanted to know, I just want to know how you wanted it. So you could take it in June, months later, and s- and, and, and be able to say, because it's, it's not going to be helpful for council to know that, oh, yeah, they thought all of them were great.
Yeah. Yeah, if we draft a letter recommending the top five of these projects um for consideration of council and put on our letterhead and.
And I think that would help us as a commission to stay focused.
Yes.
Does that make sense to everybody here?
Yeah, it does.
Why don't we each go through what you, you can finish off what, what you had questions and then maybe at the end of the discussion, we can get some public comment and then we can maybe, maybe derive it like a top five?
This sounds good. I'd like to add a comment that maybe Nora can speak to, especially since we are interested in public here, that um if you don't see something up here, that doesn't mean that it's not possibly being addressed. Um for example, the city specifically got, it's my understanding, into a budget, say for us a school infrastructure funding of a small amount, a small, when you're talking this kind of stuff, maybe fifty thousand dollars per year. Would you, do you want to clarify that for the public?
Yes, so that safety of the school program is, it's actually on here. It's uh, it's the eight hundred eighty. So this was funded last time. So this is for uh urgent, so we were, so basically what I do is a lot of time, I can lead each individual school together with our U P A members, with our police department, also with the school principal and the school's assistant superintendent. We go over the safety program and also hear back, feedback from the school themselves, say, what are some of the improvements they need. It could be as simple as signing, it could be the parking restrictions, it could be uh training movement or traffic restrictions that may be needed. So this is the funding that, that are provided for council for us to do just that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um so Patrick, did you have other ones that you wanted to talk about now or you want to come back to you?
Let's come back.
Okay. Who would like to go next? Do you have specific ones you want to?
Uh obviously, one of the, well, this one, Neran mentioned is our, the safety of the school is obviously important, but that's.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about like, uh the ones that are unfunded. Are there any questions or descriptions or added? If you want, I can go first, maybe as an example.
Yeah, go, go first, please.
All right, so on page forty one, so the eight hundred, eight hundred eighty, so page forty one in your packet. I love how you guys have come up with project description and purpose. Um I think that this is very, it makes it very clear for the next person that would pick up this document to sort of figure out who the stakeholders are. The only thing that I was gonna ask you, since you are a part of the Safe Routes to School Task Force, is there a reason why we can't actually say Safe Routes to School Task Force that's established in here? It says groups and it says school district and it says Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, but I just think that, I mean, we all do come together and it's called a Safe Routes to School Task Force. So you, you mentioned basically that, you know, the public health came in and, and they established the action plan, but I think the verbiage of that we, City of Gilroy does have a Safe Routes to School Task Force would be, would be nice.
So you want to revise it, make it set of Safe Routes to School Group to Safe Routes to School Task Force?
I think that would be more, I think that would be more uh, yeah, yes. Next one would be on page sixty three of our packets. It's E N twenty one one.
Twenty one oh one?
Yeah, twenty, twenty one eleven. Yeah, page sixty three.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so thank you very much for bringing this on the capital improvement program. This has been something that a lot of us in the picture reflects it, uh um being able to uh get this route safer. Um and I totally agree with uh, with, with the raised concrete or the raised um sidewalk. If you could just try to like, just make, uh, I know that it only talks about pedestrian, it didn't really say anything about bike. And I know that we're not going to get kids to be able to use the, use the roadway since they, it's, it's already connected, you know, from the levee trail along the bridge and stuff. Can we make that, is that possible to make it a shared use path the way it is today? Because in the description, it looks like it says it's just for pedestrians.
Yeah, so the difficulty with this is it's only about seven foot wide shoulder.
Yeah.
In order for us to make it into a shared use, it needs to be a minimum of ten feet. So with that say, if we are trying to make it into a shared use, uh there's not enough space for our vehicles and, and that's a right, it's not excellent. If we do make this into a race for safety, it's a great speed, bicycles are going to have to be a shared or shared road on that. However, the thing for us is that, you know, on this route right now, we have to keep the speed at like eighty forty miles an hour going through there, but as we are evaluating this further, once we change this and make this change, that portion from Princeval to the roundabout, it needs to be reduced speed. So that way, it'd be safer for the bicycles to actually use it as a shared road um within this portion itself, just, you know, um, you know, the other option is really the only way to make this possible to expand the actual road itself, which is completely different from the project and different profit story.
So, so I, I, I understand that and that's, and I, but I'm going to speak freely as a citizen and someone that uses it because I, I get, I get that and that's, thank you for that answer because that says a lot. By code, you cannot have it as a shared use because it's not big enough, so that you can't design it that way. However, it will be used by bicycles. I a hundred percent guarantee it because of that, that off-road um or that off-road trail that connects into that neighborhood and comes down, no one is going to go into the roundabout and go around it, go through the roundabout and then stop to connect to the levee trail. It's not going to happen. Um and so I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know where the city cannot be held liable by making its, you know, whether it's signage to say like, you know, watch out for bikes or, or, I'm just trying to brainstorm, but there's got to be something because I love that we're going to make it safer, but bikes will be using that, skateboarders will be using it, um scooters and uh, so I, I don't know, I just, I had, I had to throw that out there. Um one other thing I have about that too is, is uh when we're talking about like traffic calming, is there a way, I know you're going to reduce the speed, um that, that might be a chance? Is there, are there other tools in that toolbox when it comes to something like this where there's no neighbors on the roadway, you know, to be able to get it classified? To be able to do something to reduce that speed because that is a nice long turn if people accelerate through there? But I mean, something like rumble strips on the ground, um some sort of signage or something, is there any other thing that we can do to slow people down?
There are options, so you know, the neighbor, the way the neighborhood traffic management program work, it doesn't have to be becoming Tom driving from a residence, right? As staff and as other departments such as police department or the department itself, we can initiate these. Um part of the things that you talk about like striking the rumble strips, those are what are called basements, so it's not an intrusive or physical improvement. Those, a lot of time, you know, we can make those improvements uh ourselves when we evaluate as part of the safety um program. So anyway, this is kind of a concern. Once it's, you know, if this improvement is getting approved by council to be a use platform and it's become an issue for bicyclists using that, um we can look further into those and actually make this improvement.
Okay. Yes.
If the intent is to slow down vehicles so bikes can use the travel rate, if that they meant.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, then we.
One of them, yeah. But you, also you can see how the delineators are constantly knocked off by vehicles.
Right, so I want to make sure that the rumble strips could be a hazard for bicyclists as well, so, so we have to, I mean, you guys are the bicycles.
Yeah, no, no, I.
But um that's one consideration that we may have to.
Right, right, so Zach mentioned rumble strips as an example, but there are other things that are in the neighborhood traffic management, could be a better solution. Really realistic, I don't, I don't know what would end up happening in passing council or being with staff or what, but really what you do, if you want to spot on the traffic, is you make things even more narrow.
Can we make it as narrow as possible with that, with the addition of the sidewalk?
So we're already narrowing down, it used to be twelve foot on each side, so we narrowed it now to about eleven.
Okay.
But, you know, everything's kind of possibility, it's just we have to, you know, this got brought back into us and we're gonna have to run through that threshold and locate it again and do a traffic study because one thing we did before, during the uh, the speech survey is that that first section from monitoring that was one second. What we could do in terms of evaluating it to be more specific, we can evaluate it as a separate segment itself and raise off Thomas. So that way, we can further diagnose this segments in detail. So right now, it's kind of linked with uh with the support on the chest of, I mean, on the monitoring, it depends on, so this segment should be separated.
So will there not be any room for any more like bollards or, or reflectors? It is just going to be a raised sidewalk and that's it?
The, the conceptual plan when we were putting this together is similar to that six feet, so you see the bridge over.
But that has a concrete barrier.
On one side, it's concrete barriers, on the other side, it's just a raised um sidewalk. What we estimate around here, I'm actually putting um metal rails on there as well, it's kind of like a decorative rails on that, and that's what we're putting. So you remember, um, if you guys ride by um, um, the golden channel trails, um they have those metal railings, so that's what we're actually going to be putting on to separate the pedestrian platforms and the.
I like it.
And the pedestrian itself will be on vertical separation of six inches from the actual um bridge deck itself.
Okay.
So you're gonna have a raised platform with the rails.
Okay. Um, uh, the next one I have is uh page, packet page sixty nine, E N two twenty one fifteen. So this is a, this is another one where I, I'm just, I, I love it. This is another one that derived from, from us and constantly talking about it. And the only question I have is um, it talks about, it talks about the, the project purpose and description and justification, talks all about pedestrians, but it doesn't say anything about bicycles.
Actually, that is for both, bicycle and pedestrian, that path is going to be about twelve foot, so the raised platform is going to be also a shared use.
Okay, so, yeah, that, that's the only thing I have on that one.
Because right now, that trail is a shared use trail, so that raised platform for that crossing is going to be.
Yeah. I still got a couple more. Uh, next one would be um page seventy five.
Sorry, I have to, I just realized that when I print this out, I print our versions of it, so my number started with table content is page number one, this is your using the entire practice.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just think of all the numbers.
Okay, okay, project uh seventy five is project number twenty one forty two. This is the update to the city's trail master plan, bike master plan. So will the bike master plan, is that something that is done in-house by staff or is that contracted out?
That's kind of have to be contracted out because it, it does take a lot of data assessments and also, you know, when we, when we put this estimate together, it's not just to look at the trail as itself, but also the connectivity with the county as well, so a lot of those research and stuff is going to have to be, you know, it's all the staff and our departments.
Okay, so if there's ever a need to update or change it, what's the cost of that in the process? Like when you use an outside contractor? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking for exact cost, I'm just talking about, is there usually a cost associated to go back?
Right, there, there is a cost. Typically, master plans are very expensive, they're ranging anywhere from one hundred fifty to three hundred. This specifically we estimate at about two hundred and fifty. This is based on an estimate from other agency that's, you know, do these kind of work before. Just that the data collection portion of it is quite extensive and also, you know, to be able to prioritize these projects and come up with a conceptual plan and also putting these cost estimates on these master plan, actually, it would take quite a lot of effort.
Okay. Um, next one uh is uh project number E N twenty one forty eight. It's package pa- packet page eighty five for us. Again, this is a, I, I, I think this is a great one to, to get done too. Um it plays along with the theme of what we're doing right now. Uh one thing that I, I want, I would like for you guys to consider when you're talking about decorative, the decorative lighting in the downtown and is, would you be able to, and I don't think the cost would be too high, would you be able to extend the lights, the lights that are on the trees right now? Would you be able to extend that up into the branches? Several cities around, you know, the Bay Area have done that more than just the tree trunk, but actually extend them up. And I think all year round, it looks a lot more beautiful and I've heard other people talk about it too, so it's just an idea that um, you know, that I wanted to throw out there.
Yeah, the only thing with those things is once you start getting impacted or certain height to the trees, nothing would require to have, it's for some site or office and like, make sure it's properly put up, it is, you know, sustained doing also, it's quite a little bit more difficult because one, the way it's on trees now, I mean, a lot of times you'll have, you know, quite a specialized people for us cooperate.
Okay.
Again, it's something we need to do, right now, it's on, and what I didn't have.
Okay, completely understand that. And, and if you need to, the uh, City Morgan Hill does it, so that's an example, or somebody you can at least, you know, close by to be able to ask them uh what, what it was for them. Uh my last one is uh packet page one twenty seven and this is uh number P K twenty one ten. So the reason why I'm bringing up uh this one is that uh I know that this supports the, the Parks and Rec ma- or the master plan for Gilroy Sports Park. So as a commission, we weighed in on the public comment period for phase three, which is, you know, for the, for the arena that, that is being proposed down there. When, during that public comment period, the um, all the wording of outdoor recreation uh for like items like, actually, I, I'm not going to name all of them except for the B M X, uh the B M X dirt, dirt track or uh some sort of concrete track was planned already in the master plan for phase three as an outdoor recreation. When, when, when the consultants went back and, and revised the master plan and it's not been approved yet, it's all draft public comment period, hasn't even been brought back to council. They, they removed all the wording of B M X and there was probably about three places that had been removed from. They removed it all and they replaced it with items like curling, ice dancing, um, you know, stuff like that. And I'm not saying that we're not a hockey town, but we're more of a bike centric town and I, I'm all for that project, but what I'm not for is for the erasing of the word bike from all of that because that would literally erase the memory of anything that has to do with a dirt pump track in Gilroy. And that already happened in two thousand and seven and I promised that group that I would not let it just fall off again. And, and ironically, it fell off back then because we bought, because the City of Gilroy purchased Gilroy Gardens property and where everything got put on hold. So I am all for this project and supporting it, but it's, it kind of takes place. If we're going to completely get rid of, of the wording B M X and anything like that in phase three, phase four or five has to have a dirt pump track in it or a concrete pump track, you know, which would basically be just sort of like how the skate park is. I'm not willing to let that go.
So I'm not familiar with the gentrified, solved, dangerous school.
I'm very familiar with it.
I'm a city into yours, so I'm a little bit, I'll make sure that.
Yeah, it's, and if for anybody that wants to review it, it's uh, it's, it's still under development activity projects on the city's website under community development. That's where the public had the opportunity to weigh in on it. We even wrote, went as far as wrote, writing a letter of support for the project, but not the elimination of the word B M X. So that would be, that would be my feedback and I hope this commission, if we, if we go away tonight, that we can support this, but you must put the wording besides the baseball and softball of, of that. We, because the, the pump track that's being, uh, that is currently in the uh, like a M O U to figure out where we're going to get a pump track at Christmas Hill Park, that's only temporary, that was never supposed to be a permanent project. This sports park was supposed to be the permanent home place of that.
Yeah, I remember that.
I just want to add to what Zach is saying because, you know, uh, most of the people that we work the most with as a commission, as far as staff, are relatively new, but a couple of times we've had crowds in here much larger than this and, and the time we had our largest crowd was specifically the B M X crowd showing support for things and then we tend to be able to get those same people to come to city council and stuff. So you, we would have humongous public support behind what Zach is talking about that would occur if, if we were to only, you know, things were to get ordered in a way that that gets eliminated from the city plans.
And I don't think it would hurt anything at all to, for, for you to write something like that in this uh project description. Like e- even something as simple as saying like, you know, the id- because master plans can be changed at any time, we've already learned that, because they're doing it right now. You, general plan does not have to be completed in order for a master plan to be updated. When there's a will, there's a way and there's a will to get that sharks in the arena down there. So the master plan has been altered, has it been approved, but it has been altered. So if we could somehow get that in this document, so then that way it's still on people's minds if all this gets dropped, ten years later, it, they don't get written out of history again.
Yeah.
I'm finished. My second.
If I, if I, just for clarity, and, and I do understand your concerns about, um, the BMX and the pump track potentially being dropped out of, um, the master plan itself. So, um, for my own edification, so to speak, are we referring to the Parks and Trails master plan or the sports park master plan that has multiple phases?
The sports park master plan that has multiple phases.
And, and, um, you're referring to the ice rink facility, uh, project DIRI, is that what you're referring to?
Correct.
And, and, and you want us to make sure because that document doesn't make reference to a BMX facility in the master plan. You want us to include that verbiage in this project description?
Yes, so what I am worried is that, is that since they rewrote it, that they took away the wording of, of outdoor recreation. They took away some of the wording, which was to include a BMX park. They took that out and there's no mention of it being added in any other phase of the sports park. Okay, so if they take it out of three and now we're talking about expanding to four and five, all the other stuff did not include BMX, it's all soccer fields and it's, uh, baseball diamonds. BMX was only written in, in phase three. So that's why I'm saying I'm, I'm supportive or, or however, uh, the public wants and the council wants to do with phase three. But if we're going to make this only ice arena and themes around that, that dirt pump track has to land somewhere else. It can't, you can't just write it out and not have it included in something else. And that's what we wrote in that letter.
Okay. So if I, if I may suggest, uh, perhaps a thought, um, one of the items we have in here is the, uh, update to master plans, including the Parks and Trails master plan. And I would suggest that may be a place to capture that information as opposed to a, um, a single project page, um, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Um.
Because we are going to be updating the Parks and Trails master plan.
Yeah, but this is, but you don't have a master plan inside of a master plan. The parks master plan won't have all the information of the Gilroy Sports Park master plan, right?
It does make reference to, um, what projects, so it makes a list of, the Parks and Trails master plan has a list of potential CIP projects in the city that benefit, you know, pedestrian and bicycle recreational, uh, users. So to the extent that the information that we're looking for is not included in, um, in any of the, the referred plans, the opportunity is there to include them in the updates to the master plans, whether it's a utility master plan.
Yeah, well.
Parks and Trail Transportation Master Plan.
Yeah.
So just wanted to make that call.
Okay, I understand. I'm just, um, I won't support, I, I mean, I, I, I just want to be clear that if we're going to write that in there, I want you to know that move first. Because this is not going to reach council for a long time until the summertime anyways. Um, so, uh, that's all I'm saying. Wha- 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 wherever that gets in the record, I, I, I get it, but I'm looking at it right now. So page thirty on, and we're getting a little far off here, but you know, stuff that was re- uh, replaced was roller hockey, BMX and indoor soccer. And it was replaced with the word iceboard. Um, you know, replace indoor soccer with two rings with ice dancing. Replace BMX with broom ball and curling. Replace basketball with six courts of fitness training. And replace skate facility because it was considered at one point some sort of like skateboard thing with ice skating. So that's it, I'm done, I think I've done enough. All right?
Yeah, just to summarize, the, there were plans that people expected over a decade ago, the recession and stuff hit and.
Correct.
Other purchases and the public, there, there's a large portion of the public going, this is not going to be okay without just being removed without their input.
Correct.
All right, I have some questions now. Um, EN two-one-one-two, page sixty-five, the Lucesse pavement maintenance, Monterey to Rossi. I support projects like this because it gives another funnel into the other, uh, part of Gilroy on the other side. And Tenth Street is very clogged and not safe at this time. So I'm curious about the striping and pavement markings. What, what types of bike lanes and pedestrian facilities would go down if that project was to go forward?
So there's kind of a subject for us of how to include, uh, striping items as a box on my end for now because striping is something that typically wants to be in our design. We know the actual limits of curb, curbs, um, dimensions. We can then plan for road configurations like what we're doing now. So as part of our paving programs, every time we pave the road, can what we mentioned before, we actually operate that up to the fifth street. So it's depend on what's the width that we get. A lot of time we do have some flexibility in terms of the width of the lane. Here can be reduced, you know, our typical is twelve on our standards. However, going by our trail management plan, going by, you know, VTA guideline, uh, we can reduce some of those land boundaries to eleven or ten. And actually including a plus two, four plus, um, plus two by lane. Um, and, you know, a lot of time for bigger road like this that, for higher speed, uh, that's what we're going to be incorporating. Um, back then you'll probably see in the next, um, in the future when coming to present the fiscal year twenty, a paving project, you'll see that what's being incorporated as part of Chestnut as well.
Awesome, I'd like to see that you're adhering to complete streets. And, uh, if that was to be built out, uh, under that expectation of making use of the, the full width of that road for those types of facilities, uh, that would be exceptional. Give another direct access point of which we are limited to. Um, I have another question about EN twenty-one oh one, the fifty-fifty sidewalk program. I couldn't find the page number that's on, I think it's just a little bit out of whack in my manual. Um, but what's the detail on that?
Say EN twenty-one oh one.
EN twenty-one oh one. Yeah, it says fifty-fifty sidewalk program.
No, it's, uh, it's not EN twenty, it's, it's already been avoided, so it's eight hundred number, it's eight hundred thirty-twenty.
Oh, no wonder.
Right, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, so the fifty-fifty sidewalk program, so this is a replacement or reinforcement program that we've been operating since. I want to say to the city that makes me sense, the city's been having this program, it's gone through multiple main changes from eighty to twenty to fifty to fifty. Right now, as it's current state, we just call it the sidewalk program.
Okay, yeah, I, I had a question, I'm like, it's not approved?
No, it is already approved, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have the twenty-two and seventy thousand dollar for pedestrians improvement. So if the homeowners, um, or they're still playing regarding sidewalk jumping ball hazard, lifting and crashing themselves that, we will reach out and look to the property owners to get that sidewalk.
Fantastic, thanks for that clarification. Uh, also, I just want to add my support to items like EN two-one-zero-nine and EN two-one-zero-eight. They reflect closing gaps in our trail network. And so I strongly support anything that completes our trail network, so it's nice to see that there. And I would like to see city council definitely give that consideration.
For sure. Well, I, I just have to say that, uh, before I even got on this commission, that was a project I was excited about. I'm amazed that it might happen.
Same. Yeah. Thank you.
Um, anybody else up here have any specific items that they want to bring up? Okay, should we let the public add?
Yeah.
Public comment? Any members from the public that wish to comment? Come on up, Beth, just, uh, we, just state your name so sh- so she'll look and write it down for you, but you got to come up, even, I know you're injured, but.
Oh man, did I have lots to say? I hope I can get to where I was. For my first question, was there a description that's in progress with online and packet?
It is updated with, with.
So it's in the bike packet?
Correct.
Okay. Last night at city council meeting, um, I'm not sure where the federal funds were coming from, but they were, um, talking about six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in federal funds for low income housing areas. Was that the engineer department spoke last night?
Talking about the CDPG.
They're trying to transfer funds.
Yeah, that was the CDPG three-year development plan grants.
Okay.
Uh, the six hundred, yeah, that's, okay.
Okay.
I was there, so I.
I was just going to mention, you know, they've been talking about, um, improving sidewalks and curb repair and.
Correct.
Another stretch of adding a sidewalk over by, um, the area of school.
Yeah.
In that, they didn't mention any about striping, but that might be something to look at is adding striping into that. So then the, the main budget won't have to take on that funding. Because that funding is already there, you add the striping into that, um, put in the sidewalks and the curves and the, whatever you call things on that. Anyways, that's my opinion.
I believe, I believe striping is included to the extent that it's.
Yeah, so for, yeah, for part of the CDPG project, we do go into the right, including a winded water placement, let's say, we can, let's say a curb ramp coming into a curb ramp and we chop off the corner of a crosswalk, we go back off wall, she is included to be refreshed. And in addition to that, council did give us a separate budget of a hundred and seventy thousand dollar a year, just focusing on strapping.
Okay, I'm just saying instead of taking out a main budget to use that striping in the areas for the next bike lanes and that are.
I think there might be some restrictions in CDPG in terms of how much percentage we can actually use strapping.
Yes, so for this particular, uh, project, Chestnut, for example, the new sidewalk we're installing south of A Street or Chestnut, because we are cutting into the pavement, we'll be able to put an edge striping, um, in that location. Uh, and where we're putting new curb ramps or including the curb ramps, then we have the opportunity to, uh, refresh or, um, put crosswalks strapping. Um, but beyond that, we have to actually show, um, direct tie into the CDPG goals and objectives.
Okay.
So, but in this particular project, if we touch the pavement or the curb ramps, then those cross, uh, crosswalks and edge lines would be refreshed.
Okay, I just kind of feel that putting those striping in the whole area is for, you know, safety of the area. So that's my opinion, hopefully.
And if there's a specific. And I appreciate the comment, if there's a specific location that you want us to look at where the striping is, is off or is faded. Then we'll take a look.
Um, talking about the rails, um, adding it to the, um, Chestnut Bridge, my concern, um, first of all, there was a mention of the cement wall that goes over Sixth Street Bridge over the highway. Um, when that was first put in and I saw that was happening back, I called the city and showed my concern for that because to me that's dangerous having that huge wall. And I would never walk behind that wall because it's not safe as far as visibility. So my concern, that was a concern mine at the time. Um, my concern about the, the railing going over Lucesse Bridge, Lucesse, whatever you say. Um, is the bike handles, if they don't have access to using that, except in the car lanes, that they may hit the bicycle riding with their thing, may hit that and then cause an accident to that. So I don't know how that's going to be built, but that, when you were talking about that, it was just a concern that kind of came into my mind, like, oh my gosh, if you have to get close to the edge, your handlebars may get stuck into that metal because it's pretty tight right there. So anyway, that was just a thought. All these things are going through my mind as I'm listening to all these things, I'm like, oh my gosh. Um, uh, let's see, there's so many, I ended writing all down. Um, these are just my kind of thoughts right now.
Okay.
Like, yeah, I wanted to kind of jump out and say, oh my gosh, oh my gosh. Um, I will take a look at all of these projects, um, online, whoo, there's a lot of them. Um, and I had started, I have not gotten back into it. Um, just doing that, looking for the striping that was in need throughout the city. But I was just thinking, wow, what a way to save money out of the, the main budget is putting those striping in the lower income areas because that money can be used since you have an excess at this point. Or not, the, the funds aren't allocated, should I say, the funds aren't allocated to anything specific at this time, so.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you for commenting about the concern about bike kind of marketing things because.
About which one?
The bike hitting rails.
Oh, yes, yes.
Because, uh, you know, statistically, you might find that the bigger concern with bike crashes might not be some of the things people most worried about. It might actually be a bike hitting a car door or, like you said, having the handlebars. If something can be much more likely, very much more of an accident than some of the things people might suspect or want to be afraid of.
Um, okay, so, uh, bringing it back to us, how, how do you, how do you all as a commission want to, want to do this? Do we want to, because several of us had projects that we were passionate about. Um, how do you, how can we sum this up in a one-page, you know, document that can be carried forward into June? How do you guys want to do it?
So I'd like to create a, a letter that recommends the top five projects we believe are actionable in this short timeframe within the city's plan. And according with, uh, what you would expect Jerome, uh, we should sink on that. So whatever is most useful to be presented to city council, that'd be the path I'd like to take. I have a few ideas, I know you have a few ideas. If anyone else on this commission wants to, uh, submit ideas, we can do a voting process.
Can I get a phone?
Yeah.
Is, is it long? If it's long, you got to come up.
It is not long.
Okay.
Uh, I just, well, I'll try and talk it out, not that. I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm pretty in favor of the ice rink, but I don't think that they should remove previous projects like the BMX. Support the BMX track out there to in place of that ice rink. Um, I think they're looking, they're kind of looking at the big, big picture and preventing about the small items. And to them, obviously that has become a non-priority, if that's what you're saying, they're taking out BMX. So I'm, I'm in support of keeping BMX out there.
Thank you.
So you have a more expansive, um, use for.
Yes, thank you.
Because ice skating in the rink is very specific to a specific group, whereas BMX is to a much larger, uh, group.
Thank you. And, and BMX was born here, we have gold medal winners, you know, from X Games that live here and raising their kids here. Thank you. Um, okay, so I'll, I'll, I'm going to throw, I'm going to, I just checked off one, two, three, I actually have six. So tell me how this matches up with, with you guys. So the first one, um, that I have, the, is, uh, twenty-one oh eight and twenty-one oh nine, the Lions Creek.
Yeah.
Um, extensions, I like those, I like to be able to elevate those up.
Yep.
Um, I want the, I like EN twenty-one eleven, which is the Lucesse Bridge, um, bike and ped safety. Um, and then, uh, two, two-one-one-five, the Miller Crossing, Uvis Creek, um, pedestrian enhancements. Um, and then twenty-one forty-two, which is update the city trails, master plan, bike plan. That's something that needs to be done. Um, and then the Christmas Hill Park Trail Wayfinding Sign. Um, I haven't spoken to anybody from the Parks and Rec Commission, but I am pretty sure that since we agreed with them a long time ago that we wanted to get this done, that they would support that as well. Um, that's six. Uh, um, the only thing that I do want to, that I do want to mention again is that, is that I think that it's best to elevate a couple of them, but just sort of give a general, thank you for, you know, giving us the privy, like, yes, we agree with everything and all the ideas. Um, the only one that I really want to add in that I'm hard set on is the, uh, is the one obviously down at the, the mass, the build out of, of, uh, phase four and phase five um, of the plan down there. And I do want to mention the head that, that's not one word saying, oh yeah, you can build more baseball parks. But if you're going to build that and you're eliminated from there, I want to be very specific that you add it in somewhere else.
I think we're more for, for the development in the area.
Yeah.
In general.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so that's, d- does that make, does that make sense? Are there other ones we should add there and we can make it a top ten?
You've had three of the ones that I want to elevate.
Okay.
And you mentioned the pedestrian master plan as well, right?
No.
Okay, that's one that I would definitely like to, city to consider, especially outside consultant.
Okay.
That would, uh, survey the community and maybe I could even work with that, with the subcommittee, want to push that forward?
Okay, so that's, that's, that's seven and I, I still think that would be perfectly.
I think it's fine.
Fine, uh, seven out of the fifty-some. Did, are there any, any that we missed right now that you don't want us to be able to like carry forward and promote and advocate for? Chad, do we miss any?
I don't think.
That's stuck out?
I don't think we missed any, I just, you know, this Miller one is something, it's kind of like the tenth and Orchard. It's just, we've, we've been talking, it's, we poured it out, it's an area that we know it's a risk.
You're talking about the crossing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so it's on here.
And, and I, and I know it's there, but I'm just wondering, you know, because there are ways we can make like that our, our number, like, give it a little more emphasis. I don't know if everybody's feeling on that, but it's, there's people there every day, there's kids riding their bike, I come there to stop and I look and I'm like, oh God, and there comes a bike. It, it's just something I think we've got emails to us before about getting it through, but I just, I, I, I definitely it's on this letter, I just wonder if we can say, hey, this is one.
We could, we, we. We could, either that or we could rank them right now, I mean, we can do whatever we want. There's, there, like, like Groom said, this is historical, this has never happened before, so let's set the precedence. If, and we've done that on our strategic plans and our work plans, we said, this is actually number one and this is number three.
And I, I'm not sure maybe after that how we get into the numbers, got the Grooms, well, uh, this is this, but this is, to me, and again, maybe it's not to everybody else, but this is, you know, we had the, uh, that was turning point and I think in the, the, uh, Los Madres, you know, run, I mean, it's used every day, it's out there and it's just a bad. That was turning point and I think in the the uh Los Madres, you know, run, I mean, it's used every day, it's out there and it's just a bad intersection, it's a. Egress or a path to schools.
What kind of like support can we get from that neighborhood?
Oh, I think we can get support from Soler San.
Yeah, if we could, if we could.
A parent said email me, Soler San, a parent had emailed me, you know, about this years ago, um and we bring up to Gary every six months.
So he he here's, here's my suggestion, since we all have different, like, different areas we live and different things we're more passionate about. I think that if we just write those seven on there, saying uh these rose to the top out of everything else. Then that, then that leaves it up to that individual commissioner, that individual member of the public. To advocate for that internally rather than us ranking them.
Yeah, I'm I'm looking at the ones we've come up with, unless I'm forgetting some of them, and they seem like all of them are either some items that are pretty big pictures serving the whole community. Or there are a couple of ones that we've been talking about for various reasons for years, like the chat, one chats, like, I don't live near there, but that. That causes problems for all kinds of different groups, including, it used to cause problems for me when I tried to go to soccer practice or take my kid to preschool. It causes problems for everyone because it's right in the middle of our, the heart of our trail system.
Mm-hmm.
So I, most of these projects are not specialized to.
Even when I talked about the anchor, anchors at the um the joint meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they're talking about the anchors you have, Gilroy Gardens and you have.
Oh, yeah, the recreation spine.
And here's our spine and in the middle.
Right in the line.
It's man, you know, it's it's just, it's bad.
So I I think we do that, and then I think, like, for you, and like, you know, then then you could say, you know what, and definitely, I want you to take a look at this one that we listed. Because here's why I'm passionate about it, here's the groups that that support it.
Explain your process then again.
So what I'm gonna do is, I I think we should just list the seven that we just came up with.
Yeah.
And those seven, don't rank them, just, they're all equally important, they all have different uh different groups that would advocate different, and and then. W- once that gets out, then those groups will be able to do their advocacy, whether it's a a walking group that goes to Soler San or the neighborhood over on the. The uh far west side that wants that connection to the high school.
Sure.
Hey, uh, Jerome, do we have history of complaints per project that caused these projects to be elevated in the first place? So emails from people in the community, uh staff concerns, anyone from city council? It'd be interesting to correlate that data and see what the support base is per project.
Um, so we, through different channels, we've gotten complaints, for example, the Miller Crossing is, you know. Several of us have received complaints, either talking to residents or from commission members, council members. Uh, but not all the complaints come to one person or one location that we could create a database of, okay, you know, this location receives these many complaints.
Right.
Um, so we don't have that metrics and a way to collect that data, uh, but in the future, um, we're working on a a city app, a mobile app. Where people can actually take pictures and submit their service requests, so we have that ability to use analytics to make decisions.
Right.
But in this particular, for this particular case, that was not a factor that we used in the rating and the scoring criteria, going up policy and channel.
Yeah, it 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 just seemed pertinent to me to at least ask if there was a possibility to correlate that, given the emotional context that some of these projects might overlap with. So, thank you.
It's coming, coming, right?
Okay, so he here's, here's the motion I'm gonna put out, so we can all be clear and the recorded secretary can be clear, everyone's clear. Um, so my motion would be to, um, and maybe you guys can actually help me on this, like. Generally, like, how would you say, like, generally support all?
Motion to surface for potential consideration of city council the following seven itemized projects.
But we also want to say that we're not against everything else, because that's not what we're, we're here just to.
Prioritizing.
Do you guys have an opinion on how it's?
I recounted the number, you were saying it was eight of them, is that, is that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's eight with Chad's suggestion.
Do we still want to include the uh?
I was already.
Four and phase five of the uh.
Oh, yeah.
I have, uh, right now on my list is eight, the two line previous project, LuChessa Bridge, Miller Crossing, the Trail Master Plan, Pedestrian Master Plan. Um, Christmas Hill Trail, uh, Wayfinding Sign, and two more sports parks in that field.
So I, I don't, I don't know, I don't, what do you guys think? Is that the way it should be, like, as long as, because I I I don't really care to surface, like, to add more softball fields and baseball diamonds. I don't really, I mean, I'm not against it, but I'm not, I'm not for it, but I would love to have the mention of, if we are gonna. Remove BMX from phase three, that a BMX dirt track be added to this.
So for that one, we're just kind of like requesting or recommending.
That's, so that.
I think there's.
That's where I'm going, I got seven, but but I, but we want to make sure that, you know, PK two one one zero, the phase four and five. That a BMX dirt pump track be added if it's removed from phase three, does that make sense?
So so consideration for seven line items and then modifications proposed for one?
Yes.
That work.
Okay.
Right, and that was to do the one, I think it could be as simple as that.
The wording.
Staff that was not aware of the public issue with that.
Yeah.
Making sure they all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do that, so the motion would be to, um. To approve the 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 CIP projects that we have seen, um, but bring up, or how would you say? But prioritize.
Yes.
EN twenty-one oh eight, EN twenty-one oh nine, EN twenty-one eleven, EN twenty-one fifteen. EN twenty-one forty-two, EN twenty-one forty-three, PK twenty-one oh one. And then the following amendments to be added to PK two one one zero, which would be the addition of a BMX. Dirt or concrete pump track be added to phase four, phase five, if removed from phase three. That's a long one, but I think that that, I I'd be willing to go to bat for that one more than anything else right now, because I don't want to see that be being gone. And I, you know, our chairs rotate, staff, you know, can rotate, and so. So is there a second?
Radar.
Okay, anybody second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good job, you guys.
Hey, I'm new, uh.
Thank you, Neran.
The administrator might be a BMX fan, yes.
Commissioner, real quick.
Yes.
On this right now, it's showing that both of the Lyon Creek Trails, that's twenty-one oh eight and twenty-one oh nine.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the order, um, actually, on the packet itself, the number was actually eight hundred, because builders have been funding before for in terms of uh doing the part design. Because this is part of the future project, so I just want to make sure that the number that I put in um will be revised, it's not between one and exactly one hundred. Because it was previously approved for uh Portals Nine.
Uh, okay.
What's the, what's, do you know the number?
Right, yeah, so the first one for the Lyon Creek Trails, um, uh, west of Santa Teresa and Bay, that's eight hundred two seventy.
Eight hundred two seventy?
Right.
Eight hundred two seventy, and are they both combined together?
No.
Okay.
The other ones for the Kern Day, the Lyon Creek Kern Day, that's eight hundred two eight zero.
Thank you. Okay.
I get a real good question on that, so if you. If we have Lyon Creek Trail from Kern today. I didn't, I didn't look it down here, does that also include improvement to get across?
Right now, like, the way it's shown.
Because it doesn't come to the corner of day and.
No, there's no crosswalk to cross?
No, so it's not, so once the trail, if the trail is in place, it's part of that gap closure, that.
It would force that, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Neran.
Okay, uh, next up is item eight A, Safe Process School Update, and just remember, it is already seven forty. And we still have to get through strategic plan.
Yeah, fortunately, uh, most of these updates are things that I've already brought up at previous meetings, so I won't say much about them. So, uh, I've brought up at the two previous meetings that uh there is a real school project continuing at Elliott Elementary right now. Uh, today, there was a CHP uh walking rodeo at Elliott with all all grade levels going through uh. A uh crosswalk, safety education, uh, there will be a walking school bus training at Elliott open to other uh schools and to the community. On March eleventh, and uh probably emphasizing out of interstations and the carrier departments. Uh, and then on March eighteenth, there will actually be a walking rodeo, or just walkings, uh. Take their first, uh, I'd say it is group walk.
Oh, it's a new guy, yeah.
Maybe I'll save uh run out of visit for commissioner reports and uh maybe.
Yeah.
Commissioner Flaut, you want to talk about that or?
Uh, I could make mention of that.
Okay, uh, and then there's an ongoing project that I brought up at previous meetings that uh. Several key stakeholders, including uh public works, are working on uh developing short-term and long-term plans for Luigi Apprea, um, True Schools, Safe Streets School. And uh I will be attending a parent club meetings last night, or tomorrow night, to uh make sure that the parents are informed of what's going on. And uh, like, to get involved in the process, and I believe Commissioner Flaut plans to conduct as well.
Yes.
Yes. There will also be a uh walking roll day in March at Lendview Elementary, um, which are kind of fallen off. And possibly getting staff, um, and students there trained to help support walking roll days in order to continue there. And I believe I can save any other Safe Streets School updates for next month.
Okay, uh, any members from the public that wish to comment? Seeing none, anybody else up here? All right, um, next item is item eight B, Measure B, Education and Encouragement. Um, so this is the, kind of like a placeholder item, um, I'll I'll turn it over to Groom if he's, if he has any updates that he wants to pass along this month.
Uh, thank you, Chair, um, as um, Gary mentioned last month, we have prepared the work plan, shared it out with ETA. They've given us comments, in fact, I won't review those comments as I speak, but we've been very much focused on the CIP. Uh, and we haven't been able to uh address those comments, but that's on the work plan for before the end of the month. So uh we hope to get that uh resolved, but those comments don't seem excessive to me. Uh, and 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 I want to share some good news. Um. Next Monday, uh, there will be a budget amendment, uh, and a mid-year budget update. And the Measure B funds will be incorporated in that presentation to council. So this money is, is gonna be built into the city's budget, right? And once we submit the the work plan, then we're, we're, we're ready to move forward with the uh this approved work plan. So that's, that's a little bit of good news I would share.
That's great news, thank you.
Thank you, any members from the public that wish to comment? All right, seeing none, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, just uh that Gary, you've shared with us, um, related to our commission last meeting, some comments that he had received when looking for feedback from ETA. And uh I commented that I I agreed with the comments he'd received, he had mentioned possibly. Um, letting us see what you guys are working on sounds like that might be ready, but it's months, so that we can start helping, you know, provide feedback in, you know, an efficient way. And uh we've, we've had some uh thoughts, ourselves, or at least I have, of possibly taking what we had already written and and maybe prioritizing it out into. Something that could be achieved with a, what our long-term plan is, but what are our short-term and intermediate goals within, you know, a year, three years. With what we have been in for down the road, not necessarily trying to have all of those items, because there are many items listed, it 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 would not be realistic for them all to occur at once. Especially given that some of the items require a great deal of staff time or somebody to coordinate the things happening, which. Uh, what we've got to the point in Gilroy is finding difficulty having those things be coordinated without actually being paid to do that.
Okay, um, next up is item eight C, Bicycle Pedestrian Commission Monthly Award Nomination. This is open for anybody that's got a nomination for March.
So uh, I'm guilty of nominating my children's school in the past, we had a wonderful principal, Derek Pryor, who supported Safe Streets of Schools. Uh, luckily for my children, we received a new principal, his name is Michael Kelly, and he's already making uh wonderful strides towards embracing SRTS. He's working with Santa Clara County and uh he is facilitating a pilot program to uh increase services involving SRTS at that location. So I would like to nominate uh Michael Kelly for next month's award.
I'll second it.
I I think it would be great to show them how much we appreciate that he's jumped on board, like, trying to work on this as a new principal. And he did, uh, and also, he's not just new to to that school, he actually came from far across the country, another state, and has jumped onto this. And tried to learn as much as he can about it and get as much knowledge as quickly as he can.
Yeah.
Okay, um, do you guys know how to spell his last name?
Is is there an E or is it just, I want to see, it's K E L L E Y?
I believe so.
Okay.
So we can get it right for the, for the minutes? And though, so can we get?
I believe that's correct, I could have that.
Let me double check, I have in my.
Um, I. I like that we mentioned possibly, um, seeing the people like.
It's K E L L Y, full name Michael.
Yeah.
Uh, Luigi Apprea? Awesome.
Uh, just for the teacher, I'm glad you mentioned that, you know, someone like Karina possibly.
It's a kid.
I think that was the original take.
Yeah.
Maybe some will come from the people that she inspired that we were aspiring today.
Oh, or I was trying to suggest even the two friends of her that's that's been with her the whole time too, so. Ho- hopefully that message got passed.
Also, uh, then another thing that ended up happening, and this is huge, because uh, and the problem is actually worse in some other communities. Um, is uh someone stepped forward to be a crossing guard at Elliott School on the uh intersection of Chestnut and Old Gilroy. Um. Was talked about for a long time, but the school district gets into a problem if nobody agrees to do the job. So hopefully she'll continue, maybe she'll get awarded at some point, but my, I think one of our first awards actually to the uh crossing guard.
At Kern.
Handles the same intersection of uh, I'm telling you, in Kern. Uh, another good news is, uh, she may have found a second crossing guard to help with that intersection. Which legally it's supposed to have two crossing guards, but again, that cannot happen if nobody agrees to the job.
Okay, all right, um, did I take public comment on that? Any members from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, okay, all right, uh, next up is um nine A, New Business, Strategic Plan, Work Plan Updates for twenty twenty. Um, so I'll I'll kick this off, uh, city council has not um updated their strategic plan since last year. So if you look in your packet and you want to look to our strategic plan, you'll notice that um, the uh. I'm sorry, I'm totally not prepared with what the.
Thirteen.
Numbers are, pa- packet page fifteen, you'll you'll see the goals listed on there. Um, so there, they have been updated since since that, and there's actually seven of them now, and I will read them to you. Because I took the time to put them in here, they're very similar, but here's number one, uh, ensure financial stability. Number two, enhance public safety capabilities, number three, revitalize downtown. Four, focus on revenue-driven economic development, five, retain stability in the city's workforce. C, provide opportunities for meaningful public engagement, and seven, ensure neighborhoods benefit equally from city services. Um, so in the past, with the strategic plan, what we did is we would go through it, um, obviously, I'll I'll update who the chair is and the the vice chair. Um, and uh. And from there, it's it's basically going through our goals and trying to figure out what we want to take off, if there's other stuff you want to add. We completely could keep this exactly the same until next year and not do anything. Um, I think it would help us to, at the very least, um, to to go uh, um, to update the work plan um for us. So then that way, because some of this stuff on our work plan, the third, number one, was the Safe Process School Coordinator position, that's what we were, we were pushing for that inside the budget. Um, number two was the BMX dirt pump track, um, we're obviously still working on that, but like, number three, which is the Back and Angle Parking Pilot Program. We've already.
Yeah.
Done that, we're finished with that, and that's, that that's a tool that that public works, you know, can now use to give. Give that example um and present that to council, um, so I'm I'm leaving it up to you guys on what you want to do, um.
How about, um. How about we replace number three with encourage Gilroy to slowly phase in infrastructure that supports non-combustion engine transportation. So charging station networks, pushing for scooter and bike electrified access and charging points.
Okay.
We can be sort of an advisory board to City Council on those matters, make it a goal to be a source of information. That sound actionable?
Maybe. I think the only reason why I'm hesitating is that the charging stations out there for vehicles, I don't think should be on there. But remember the, the. Specifically, I added in my notes actually for today too. The program policy document for e-bikes and e-scooter operation is already in the city's, city staff's work plan. So it's already been removed from us and pushed forward. So I wouldn't want to put that in there as something we're trying to work on, because it already, we already advocated on that two years ago.
Right, right.
We stopped advocating on that at the end of 2018 when we pushed it forward after that third e-scooter and e-bike presentation.
Well, we can discuss this further and see what else lines up. I don't know what else the full commissioner is thinking.
Well, it raises a question. So we did advocate for and work with, you know, like things I was referring to. Is there anything we left out in that process that we would have to do with just somehow supporting people? I'm not saying there is something, just because if there's something we left out, then support people that are buying e-bikes as opposed to renting.
Yeah, their own.
Yeah, that could overlap.
So we could, we could focus it like that, a place where, like you are a public place where if you had your own private e-bike, that infrastructure is set up so that you can enjoy the same public amenities plug-in and use it.
The equation, something that's not deployed the city as a program that you'd run with, but something that facilitates using something you own.
In the public right away.
In the public realm. Yeah.
I like that.
Let's do that.
I like.
Because we don't, we can't control if the company decides to come in here and work and the city, like, you know, is able to cooperate in the way that works in the city. But private citizens are going to be getting more and more of these as time goes on.
And I think that, I think that what you're trying to get at is the vehicle charging stations is that if somehow this is like, a, like a few years ago, we're thinking of bike corrals, and everyone was like, what the heck is a bike corral? Well, that's, it's commonplace now. Everybody kind of knows what it is. You know, it's a parklet. It's a place. But if you have something like that, a vision of a place, an actual electric hub where you can plug in, then I think you can use that to parlay into advocating what you're trying to advocate.
Exactly, exactly.
And we were just alternative transportation instead of electric.
Non-internal combustion is pretty much the only goal that we should have.
Not bikes that don't.
That encompasses everything.
Right? My bike, I don't.
There's lots of ways to describe it. We can get the correct verbiage. But yeah, my goal would be just non-gas burning transportation. I think that'll cover everything.
And what do you guys want to do about number one and number two?
Number one is the coordinator thing. I think that's gonna get figured out in the process of the Measure B, E and E spending plans. I don't know that we, pending those discussions, we may or may not feel that we can continue having that be our number one goal or a goal at all. Or it may come to which I agree on.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been discussed quite a lot.
For number two, I can tell you that I'm still not, we're still not completely 100% finished.
Make that number one.
Number two, number one?
Yeah, BMX. If we're gonna get rid of that, I mean.
Okay, so we're gonna.
And I mean, we've been talking about BMX since we've gotten on board.
I know.
Because seven years before, I mean, right, it's definitely a thing that I think we just, like you said, now they're moving it potentially out of Phase Three. It's not even mentioned. Well, because obviously people.
It'd be symbolic too. It was number one.
This is something we've been pushing forever.
Okay.
I support that.
And, and we are going to be going through master plan updates eventually too, and that boarding is in here as well. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Right, so we're saying we can eliminate number one, because it's not at a point that it's going to be figured out.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do we have to eliminate it? I mean, it can still be one of our, I mean. We don't know. Is it more more jail? Is it a Safe鲁斯 School?
Give a caveat to what I was saying. It could be worth leaving because, just because there's Measure B, E and E funding, does not mean that there could not be other funding that ends up becoming available, depending on how the city community, how aggressive they are with seeking other funding sources. This part of that should even continue to be funded from other city funding. So maybe, maybe it should not be taken off.
Yeah, all I'm trying to say is I think, I think it's a goal of this commission to just keep supporting Safe鲁斯 School. So maybe we don't matter what, right?
Yeah, it's a tenet.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should make sure that it's in our goal. We support. So again, maybe it's not number one, but it's somewhere in there that we can move down and say, maybe we rewarded a little to say that, you know, continue to find.
I know what Chad's getting at. So we have goals that we should actually take, define steps towards to accomplish, and they should be there until they're accomplished. Maybe we should have core tenants as well. Like below that, not necessarily something you're going towards, but something this commission strongly believes in for the conceivable future.
Right, but I'm really, just from this comment with that, perhaps until these plans that we currently are talking about in the coming months, plus, like I said, other, we just, we're getting to a point where that's being figured out. So maybe it needs to stay on there until it's figured out.
Yeah, so.
And my look at it too is we just got a presentation by, you know, three kids who went through Safe鲁斯 School. Now they want to take it to high school. I never expected that when we did this first. We were looking for a coordinator. Now potentially there's something they might do that we need, they might need our support. And that's what I'm trying to say is I think it's, we can always say, hey, this is one of our goals, Safe鲁斯 School. You know it's coming here. We're gonna do it.
So would we be in favor of just moving the BMX to number one and moving down one to number two?
Sure.
And in that way, the verbiage is the same. It's literally just flip-flopping? And then is everybody in agreement to take out number three, the vehicle back-end angle parking?
Yeah.
Take that out, and then if everybody's okay, I'll work with Patrick to get the right wording for, for number three to talk about this, this hub. And whether we talk about, whether we say it's alternative modes of transportation, or we come up with a better idea, and then we'll come up with a description for you guys. And I always like having some sort of video. It helped when back-end angle parking, right? It helps people just be able to click on it. Maybe there's examples out there in the world that we can show what an electric hub would look like, where it's a vehicle plugging in or somebody's private scooter, that kind of stuff, and in the public right away.
That sounds great.
Does that make, is that okay with everybody?
One of our goals.
Okay, so I'll work with Patrick on, on that, and we'll do that for number three. If you guys can just go to page. Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the backside of these pages. So if you go to page 16. Page 16 and parts of 15 contain stuff that we, sort of like you're talking about, like a tenant, it's like a placeholder stuff that we've been talking about. Is there anything inside these languages from 15 to 16 that we want to take off or add on to?
Looking. So the update to the Gilroy Trails Master Plan, Bicycle Pedestrian Transportation Plan, the Parks Master Plan, seems like the city is considering that in their next round of capital improvement projects. We could probably serve to redact that.
Well, it hasn't been done yet though, right? It still has to get approved.
Consideration, right?
Yeah, but it still has to go through, you know, it still has to go through a couple other commissions and then be approved through council.
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to leave it on there at least until next year, if it gets, if it gets done.
Just from my short time on this commission, I think if you leave it on there until it gets blessed.
Like really gone away.
Orchard, we're talking about forever, and they're still having done, and I don't want to, you know, lose it. So in two months.
This could also be a wish list, like design and build a bicycle pedestrian bridge from Hecker Pass Trail at Bursel Road to Gilroy Gardens. That's millions upon millions of dollars in environmental impacts, but it's a wish list.
So what happens, what happens is if it stays on there, then we might start talking about it for months or years because we know the stock could be happening right now. But then it's there for when different commissioners leave to, and we see that it's an idea that could move itself forward.
Okay, that's all it is. Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I, what's done? The Healthy Cities Program Guide, the only thing we haven't done yet that I'm going to try to get this year is to, and Groom, since you're here, so the NACTO Street Guide, Street Design Guidelines is one of those things on that Healthy Cities grid. And from what we've been told from Gary and you're on is that they actually already follow that. And the same thing about that access to water policy. It's just a policy statement that can be done at staff level, and it's something that you already do anyways. And it's a nice little checkbox to say, no, actually, we, we do subscribe to that. That's something that we already do. But some of this others, like we already, I can take away the access to water policy because we already have that. Incentives for biking and walking, we, that's already, we're, that's Measure B, right?
Yeah.
Education encouragement.
The 10th and Orchard is still there as well. Want to keep that there?
Yeah.
Until it's done.
Until it's done. Yeah, I don't see, I don't see anything else that, that should be taken off that hasn't been done.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
Fine.
So this is our document. We hold it in-house. I'm the one that drops it. We're the ones that approve it. So what I'll do is, is I'll try to take all the suggestions and work with Patrick and fix number three on there. And then I'll bring all this back and put it in our consent calendar, so everybody has a chance to review it, and the public has a chance to review it. If there's something in there that doesn't seem right, all you got to do is pull it, say, we forgot to add this, or forgot to take this out. And at that time, we'll change it and we'll bring it right back. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Any members from the public that wish to comment? All right. Anybody else back up here? Okay, so what did I, what did we write down for this one? So, all right, so the motion would be to, I'll make the motion to approve updates to the strategic plan, work plan for 2020.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice. Okay. Next up is item 9B, Standardized Bicycle Pedestrian Commission Support Letter Language. So we talked about this last time. Gary thought it was a good idea to come up with just sort of a standard format that we can all kind of agree on, because there has been opportunities where it's been like super last minute. And either it's city staff looking for a letter of support or others. And so what I did is I took out, I don't know which page it is in your guys' packet, but basically just took language that, that, that we've already been using in our letters of support. And I put them in a couple of different paragraphs. It's on packet page 25. That's it. So all we're doing is we're just looking for, just looking for a motion to approve what's written on here. And again, this is in-house for us to use too, and for the future, to be able to, you know, future commissioners to be able to use. And we can add and change to it whenever we want.
Looks good to me.
Okay, so if I could just get a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Um, next up is item 9D, Submitting Requirements for Agenda Items. And I'll pass this on to Groom.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Hilton, for that opportunity. So we, our staff, wanted to put this item on tonight's agenda to make sure that we have the utmost ability to support the commission. As you know, we are leveraging our abilities and resources to put together a packet and put it out in accordance with the project requirements. So we would have put out a request to the commission to make sure that we get any agenda items ahead of time as soon as possible, so we can package the material together and comply with any applicable requirements. So we want to have a discussion on what the commission feels like would be a reasonable timeframe for soliciting topics or recommending agenda items so we have a cutoff date or hours before the meeting that allows us to put together a complete package and publish so as we're not in violation of the project.
What timeframes are the other commissions in the city using at this time?
I know some commissions, I don't know about all the commissions, but I know the Parks and Rec Commission, they finalize their package, because I get to see that packet that goes through our Parks section. We put together our own report from the Parks section 10 days before the meeting.
Okay. Is, is this agenda item being brought up to the other commissions as well?
I'm not sure.
I'm trying to figure out if you're standardizing the whole process or if it's just for us.
So our city clerk, if she, if they haven't come to do a presentation here to this commission, they have been going to all the commissions.
Okay.
And walking through our commission members and outlining there. So describing the steps and processes involved. So the, very good question. The end goal is to standardize the process for all passions and make sure that everybody follows the same rules and plays by the same rules.
Okay, so what would your expectations be on the ideal timeframe?
I'll let our secretary maybe speak to that item. If there's a time limit that helps you double. With five days before. So if the meeting is on a Tuesday, and Friday we want to publish, typically we want to publish the the package on Friday, that way we can, we give the public enough time to read the package. So if we can get all items by that date of that week, so Sheila can, has the time to put together the package. And if there are any changes to the packet or any last-minute modifications or final touches we need to put on, then that gives us enough time to do those changes. So if we can get any agenda items, last-minute additions by Monday, the week before the meeting, that would be our request.
I think that's a fine request. Does anyone else in this commission have anything to back?
No, I was trying to find it in here too, to see if they actually had a date. But I, I don't see one. They just talk about how to get, how to get an agenda item on there. They, they, they're talking about how they prefer that you try to do future agenda items, like when we have them here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but like, like Groom said, even, so this goes back to the 10th Street Bridge where it was like, like, okay, the, item's finally done, we're ready, but it's like, shoot, we missed the, we missed the, the, you know, the go-ahead to do it, and you can't just do it in the last minute, or that puts extra notifying. So I think that's what it is too.
Okay, that's fine. It's good to have those discussions and make sure everybody's on the same page. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any members from the public that wish to comment? Anybody back up here? Okay, good. So let's see here. Next up would be correspondence. The Gilroy Counts 2020, the flyer's in there. Public Health is looking for some volunteers. So if you want a volunteer, check out that flyer. There's information on who to contact in there. Item number 11, Oral Reports by Commission Members. I just realized here too that we should switch Sheila on this, the, switch the vice chair from Sean to Patrick on there. So who wants to go first? How would we do that one tonight?
I can go first.
Go ahead, Patrick.
I'm going to be verbose. Okay, so I have some feedback on oral reports, and I have a suggestion on reporting the way we speak going forward. So I'll talk to that. Gary Heap at the last meeting mentioned some concerns regarding our commission's oral reports that surrounded their long duration, their breadth, and extended scopes. After some consideration and discussion with fellow commissioners, I would like to propose a path going forward that supports our secretary Sheila and gives us the visibility in our meeting minutes I seek for us all. I would like to propose a process that would require those commissioners seeking to read an oral I would like to propose a process that would require those commissioners seeking to read an oral report in excess of one page of text during the report period to provide this oral report ahead of time to our secretary for her review and inclusion below our oral report section in the meeting minutes as originally submitted oral report. And for there to be a section above this area in the minutes that states oral reports minutes. That can reflect ad hoc discussion amongst staff, citizens, and fellow commissioners not provided in this previously submitted report. This process would allow our secretary to simply make notes of our discussions surrounding our reports, and would allow citizens and staff to see our full form reports at the top of previous meeting minutes, and not be buried deep within the associated information in our packets. So that'd be my suggestion going forward, open to feedback from staff or any commissioners on that, you can let me know your thoughts. Now I have my oral reports. First, I'll talk about the Brownell Middle School Engagement Event that uh, Chair Hilton and Commissioner Reedy and myself attended today. There was a, a group of students at Brownell that uh, are concerned about an intersection nearby. That would be the Second Street and Prince Vale intersection, the four-way stop. They're worried about uh, people speeding and not stopping at the intersection, stopping in the intersection itself, and just their general safety of that area. So we turned that into a learning experience. We showed up and talked about how we are an advisory committee, how we uh, make progress with getting feedback like theirs, how we are their conduit to staff. So I consider that a successful event, and we even spoke about possibly reconnecting down the line if and when that project were to get traction through the city. So they'd like to get involved with that process and make it a learning experience for their school, something we can all learn from. So I saw a lot of impact there. Also, uh, I've been involved in ongoing SRTS, Safe Streets to School Workshop Planning with the County of Santa Clara and fellow Commissioner Sean Reedy. focused on higher programs related to pedestrian and bicycle access and safety at Luigi Preia Elementary School. They compromise, uh, comprise a multifaceted task force made up of members of this commission, Santa Clara County, GUSD, Gilroy Police, and an outside facilitator employed by America Walks, a state and local program aimed at encouraging walking enablement in cities. As we progress in our workshop meetings, Sean and I will bring back additional information for this commission's consideration as part of our commission's larger efforts at encouraging SRTS expansion in Gilroy and our elementary school system. Lastly, I'll finish with some updates from my role on the Caltrain Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, I have a, an important announcement here, there will be a fourth Caltrain coming to Gilroy in July twenty twenty-one. This is huge, it's been the cumulative effort of uh, current council member Kat Tucker in her last ten years uh, in the position that I'm now filled, advocating for this expansion. Unfortunately, even though a potential ten trains a day uh, to Gilroy Station through a partnership with VTA and Union Pacific uh, is possible, the JPB Consolidated Twenty-Nine Financials um, show that there will be a sixty percent reduction in diesel fleet, which means there will only ever be four trains to Gilroy for the future. So this is the final train we're getting. Uh, also, to end, the Calmod electrification plans are showing that full system capacity, which is three to four trains per hour, um, will be reached by twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, and it will account for the burn-in and certification period of all new uh, electric rolling stock. So I thought that'd be helpful to share, that's my report.
Thank you. Um, Sean Reedy, would you like to go next?
Sure, um, one thing that would have been nice to possibly recall earlier when he was here, although we don't really discuss our official reports. Uh, S- Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition has been talking about doing an infrastructure ride in Gilroy. Uh, and Neuron has shown interest in doing an infrastructure ride, uh, even outside of necessarily being supported by someone like that who would help. Uh, because there's really a lot that's been done in Gilroy recently, uh, and lots show off, uh, when it's been discussed before he's uh, you know, one, he's busy, two, he wants to see if he, he himself can get other people that work for the city involved. Uh, our commission and uh, Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition can help get lots of people involved, possibly elected officials and things, uh, community members. Um, but uh, there's also some strategy around, there's some projects that aren't finished yet that would be really nice to show off. Now, if we're gonna be supported by Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, they have a deadline of the funding of supporting us, um, end of fiscal year. So someone keeps emailing me from there to see if I have any updates, and I keep saying, well, yes, we're interested, but we don't know what we want to do with it. And I promised that I would mention this in this meeting. Other update is uh, that uh, we have plans to do a table with Gilroy, uh, Gilroy Unibikes Run for Fitness and Gilroy High School on March fourteenth. Um, we have plans, we, we, supporting, we don't know, not clear if feedback will actually be on the ride, I may. Um, there's gonna be a family fun ride connecting with the hundred fiftieth anniversary, um, event also on March fourteenth. Um, and there's been someone from Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition working on what the route will be and um, you know, keeping track of who to market it to, what businesses should start to kind of stop by, uh, various members of the community, um, including me, some Parks Rec Commission and other people, and then giving, uh, you know, feedback about who to market to, group suggestions, things like that. But the ride will be March fourteenth, then Bill, and then, uh, the hundred fiftieth, or anniversary event. Um, party in the park, uh, we'll have people there, that's June twentieth from three to seven P M this year. On Saturday this year, which is a change, had been on Friday evening previous. That's mine.
All right, um, Lionel, would you like to go next?
Nothing.
All right.
I don't have nothing, but I'll say two things real quick. So if you get a chance, check out uh, Anthony Pacello's picture of before the hundred fiftieth.
I did.
Yeah, it's all the specialized bikes and the drone, I'm assuming, but go check it out, it's worth seeing it. Um, and I travel next month, so I will not be here, so I think I should do my, some record, forty-eight hours or whatever it is. What is our renewal?
Good question.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a process.
Well, we're, we're doing, we're doing it now, um, so that'll.
Not being here.
Yeah.
Remember, we talked about this six months ago.
I remember too. Okay, we'll take care of it. Um, so uh, the, uh, another event that I have to mention too is the Turning Wheels uh, annual event at the Gilroy Library will be June thirteenth, um, from eleven to two, and uh, we're gonna be trying to work with the police department again too, and um, members in the community to uh, to put on a bike rodeo on there at that same, same exact time. Um, I also just wanna say, you know, how fitting uh, today that, you know, we honored two staff members tonight, um, as Public Works gets to launch the city's CIP. Uh, staff has put a lot of time and effort into the CIP and created a document that can be understood by, I think, everybody. Um, it's one that can be also passed on to the future uh, staff with ease. I also wanna thank staff and city council for always paying attention to what this commission has been advocating for several years now. I know we are not the easiest commission to work with, and we are by no means a status quo commission. And neither is the CIP, that is not a status quo CIP. What is clear is that we both wanna push the city forward, so I just wanna commend staff for, for, for what they put together, it's a, it's an awesome document. Um, I also wanna mention too that what you witnessed tonight with the CIP is historic. And it began uh, you know, during my first year here and Chad's first year here, um, where we didn't really know we were governed, that we were actually governed as a body by an ordinance. And we fought to change that ordinance, and that came from me drafting up the new modern ordinance, and that was back in two thousand seventeen. Um, so me drafting ordinances for consideration in this process should not come to surprise by anyone. It's in our past practice and my past practice. Having this CIP in front of us tonight is from change that occurred to that process in two thousand seventeen. When we weren't presented the CIP at the time, we were not presented anything from the budget, and we were not given the opportunity to review any of the, any of the, the budget requested items. It was required by charter for the Parks and Rec Commission, when I sat in on their meeting trying to learn about what other commissions were up to, and they were denied the request to, to even review uh, the CIP at that time. Uh, and when they finally got the opportunity, they were told that all the items had already been set, and it was being put in front of council. Um, we fought for our ordinance change to include the annual review of the CIP. Uh, so I, I drafted what I wanted in our ordinance to look like in twenty seventeen, and it was improved by city council in twenty eighteen. We're here today because of that fight. That process always, that process allows the public to have early input in the process, and for city council and for staff to have support from their advisory bodies as they move forward. So I just wanna say thank you for, for doing that, and that's all I have to report. Um, so this next uh, next item is a place for, um, item number twelve is for staff comments.
Um, thank you for. I don't know how to use this thing. Thank you, uh, Chair Hilton and fellow commissioners, uh, for having me here. Um, it's always a, um, pleasure to be here and share, uh, in the wisdom that you all, you all bring to the table. Uh, and I always appreciate your dedication and commitment to uh, improving pedestrian and bicycle safety in the city of Gilroy. Um, I do wanna share uh, the good news that Gary Heap, as you may or may not know, he, he had surgery, that's why I'm feeling it for him. I spoke with him earlier today, he's doing very well. He recovered from the surgery, and in fact, he's gonna be here tomorrow. So even though he may not be able to type and, and uh, do some very intricate activities with his right hand, he will be here and we need his brain more than his.
Plug in.
So I just wanted to share that with uh, with you all. Um, another update I wanna give to the commission is, uh, we had a meeting with Caltrans today. Uh, as you may, may know, First Street has been uh, under construction uh, by the city for the waterline replacement, which has been completed, but also for uh, the roadway improvements. So they have uh, restarted and are finishing, in fact, completed three of the curb ramps. And they're gonna continue working on the remaining within the next three weeks, they say most of the ramps will be completed. So I thought this commission would, would wanna know that information, uh, and I wanted to share that with you. With us, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up is agenda items for the next meeting. Um, does anybody have agenda items that they wanna put on for the next meeting? Um, I'll obviously bring back our strategic plan and work plan for you. Um, the only thing that I wanna, another item that I wanna put up there is um, just in case uh, Brownell Middle School wants to come and do a presentation similar to Gilroy High students, um, one of those students has done a PowerPoint, uh, and so if we could just add that to the, uh, a future agenda, doesn't mean it'll be next agenda, but have that on there as a placeholder in case we can convince uh, that, that group to come here, that that would be a good presentation for us. Um, I also am not gonna be here at the next meeting, so we're running thin. We need three to show up. I, I plan on uh, telecommuting, um, but, but you can't, telecommute does not count towards the quorum, there has to be three here, so.
So we'll play by ear and we'll let Sheila know.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, like, we need to be sure that, like, a week before, that if we're not gonna have a quorum, that we cancel the meeting ahead of time, not have it happen where it's.
You ever shows up?
Yeah, where we, where we waste time, does that make sense for everybody?
Yeah.
Yes, and then, and this is good that Zach brings this up because there was a time before some of you were here where we were in a situation like this, and then somehow someone didn't show up, and we were expecting to be here, and we had to cancel the meeting. And we had a crowd here.
Nobody ended up showing up before.
Did we have canceled?
We did, yes.
Okay. So, um, so definitely to out, I, you know, not to pressure you guys, but we need you there in March. Um, if you can, and if you find that you, if you find that something comes up, uh, you know, let us know as, you know, as early as possible, so we can, we can coordinate that.
Yeah, um, I'm on the Caltrain Committee, and the secretary will email out all of the members asking at least a week in advance if they can attend that meeting. That might be something you could consider asking commissions about a lot.
Um, one thing I did read that we didn't do last time, uh, when, when I was telecommuting in, is that um, everything needs to be a roll call vote. It can't be, it can't be, uh, it has to actually be a roll call vote, so that is something to take in consideration. So it has to actually, you can't, it can't be like, when we're here in a quorum like this, um, if somebody is participating remotely, it has, you have to actually visually, you have to uh, capture that in the minute, so it's a roll call vote, so it would be like, no, Chad said yes, Patrick said yes, Zach said yes, Sean, who's remote, says yes, and Lionel says yes.
Right, so the most important now, but pre- pre- last year was me, now Patrick needs to understand that, because it'll be funny.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah, no, no pressure at all.
Um, okay, are there any other future agenda items that anybody has?
No.
Okay, um, all right, so that is it, adjourned to the next regular meeting on March twenty-fourth at six P M, thank you.